The next item on our agenda is a public hearing. This is an amendment to the future land use map of the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan. Mr. Crowe, if you'll have to answer some questions.
Thank you. I just want to point out before we go into the specifics of the amendments that there are three items listed regarding Lawrence Tech University. Public hearings A and B. Public hearing A deals with future land use map. Public hearing B deals with rezoning requests. Another site plan is A, Site Plan 1283. I will be due currently requesting a postponement on the site plan issues until September. All we will be doing is dealing with the master plan and the rezoning tonight. And I wanted to bring that clarification up so that we don't spend time dealing with site plan issues at this time. The public hearing A is amendments to the future land use map of the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan to amend several parcels 2422-326-010 through 012 and 2422-377-006 through 011. From moderate density single family to medical education institution to plan for the future expansion of Lawrence Technological University. And I have a brief video presentation for the public.
On behalf of the owner of Lawrence Technological University, it is to amend the future land use map of the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan in accordance with Article 4, Section 5.59 of Comprehensive Master Plan under Chapter 45 zoning ordinance. From moderate density single family to medical educational institution to plan for future expansion of Lawrence Technological University. The property is located at 21222 West Ten Mile Road, east of Circle Drive and north of Ten Mile Road between Northwestern Highway and Circle Drive in Section 22 of the city. The subject parcels, as well as the parcels to the west, are shown as moderate density single family residential on the future land use map. The properties to the north, east, and south are shown as medical educational institutions. The site contains 16.5 acres of land with 585 feet of furniture on Ten Mile Road and a depth of 1,705 feet. Issues considered by the planning department during review of the master plan amendment request were: The amendment has been thoroughly studied by the planning commission at their planning commission study meeting. The amendment will serve to guide and coordinate decisions on new development and redevelopment. It has been a review of development proposals to confirm they meet the goals and strategies of the plan and provide a basis for amendments to the zoning ordinance and the zoning map. The amendment will provide for any future expansion of Lawrence Technological University.
I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council may have after the public hearing and make my recommendation on resolution.
Okay. This is a public hearing. And I will, first of all, is anyone here from the LTU that would like to make any comments regarding the future land use map amendment? If you'd come to the microphone, make your, tell us your name and address for the record. Your business address is fine.
Hi, I'm Joseph Verizer. I'm the university architect for Lawrence Tech at 21,000 West Ten Mile here in Southfield. We have plans that have been in existence for a number of years dating back to before I was on the campus, which would be pre-1998 and many years before that, showing expansion plans of the university to the west into the Circle Drive area. And it's been common knowledge, and we have always shown those plans quite openly to the public in meetings such as this. And so now we are taking that first venture into migrating of our plans and require consideration of the master plan change and the subsequent reserving.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wants to speak, please come to the microphone. You have, give your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Pamela Gero, P.O., Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 4037-0155. I just wanted to have the council to consider being a little bit more specific about amendment to future land use map of the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan. When you say amendment, are you putting in a general amendment to say that you can orchestrate the verbiage to suit the particular issue? Or are you going to be specific to say and further define future land use on the map and what that means? Because I'm not clear. And I'll acquiesce some of my time so that you can answer me since that's the manner in which you like to do things.
It is what it is.
I don't understand it is what it is.
It says what we want to do is amend the future land use map for this plan.
So are you talking about strictly for Lawrence Tech or is this for all future use?
This only involves Lawrence Tech.
Okay. Okay. And specifically, what does the amendment encompass?
Changing the land use.
From what to what?
It's, uh...
There's another hearing talking about rezoning. So are you speaking of the rezoning here in E?
Changing it's ERO from, uh...
For the gen...
Yes.
Just a correction. We're dealing with the master plan as the guide.
Eventually.
And the next item will deal with this zoning. But this is specifically from a general category of residential, moderate density, to medical education institution, which permits institutions similar to Lawrence Tech and lay the groundwork for consideration of rezoning to ERO, which is Education, Research, and Office.
Okay, that's clear, Mr. Crowe, and thank you for that very valuable and knowledgeable information that you knew.
I need a motion. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there...
Yes.
Yes. Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Greg Keeler. I live at 25170 Circle Drive. This amendment to rezone or rechange this area of master plan as it is now with Lawrence Tech renting out property has caused problems to me living there. I've been accustomed by some of the people that they rent to as I've walked the street, riding them on me and my wife and I, as we walk our dogs. We have gone to the police office to report this incident, and because nothing happened, nothing was done. And as you start rezoning and rechanging this lot up to the property of my home, so I would have a problem with that. I would also have a problem with security at that point because then you would have 24-hour surveillance of my house and what's going on. So if I wanted to leave, go on vacation, now I would have to worry about it. I'd also have to worry about more foot traffic from the school walking through my property and walking around my property. And at this point in time, I've been there 17 years, and I've enjoyed being there. And I don't think it would give me the value of what I believe my house is or the value of me being able to buy something that is equal or relevant to where I'm living at now with the safety, with the ability to move from Southfield to Detroit to Farmington to Bloomfield Hills, from the freeways and the highways and all the roads that are accessible to me now. So I'm not in favor of just being there because it will cause great harm to me as I'm looking forward to retiring and hopefully being one of those ones when I leave here, it's an up high in the box.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Riley, do you have, can you respond to any concerns that the residents have at this point?
It's kind of like someone else's.
Well, I know that, but I want, I want a response at this time about the charges that the...
When we went to the planning commission meetings, the preparation and the final meeting, some of those issues came up. We did indicate at that time that we do have two controls that go through there now in the neighborhood. We have a home sit in the option, but not occupied by, but keeps by the president of the university. As a result of the properties that we own there, we do provide our own security in addition to what the police do. And we also indicated as a commitment that we would add security control as any incentive that we propose to migrate into that area. Now, the police have the ability to enforce the law. I've heard comments before, people coming up here tonight in the back of the room from someone about parking on the streets and a long list of line department for parks and even a bonfire. Now, when you get into the bonfire, they understand they broke into law, and that should be a call for the police and should be dealt with. The students are accountable for that. Beyond that, the university has its own code of conduct, code of conduct, and that is enforceable by the dean of students. So if we're made aware of it by our security department, complaints going to them either from the residents of Souths or from the police department or any sorts, the dean of students has powers that go beyond the law. It's our own code of conduct, and so we have the ability to deal with students in enforcing the matter as well. Now, there are no, any other issue like parking, for example, walking through. I can't deal as well with walking through. People are going to walk through. But as far as loud parties that are excessive, that can be issued, reported and dealt with. If anyone is breaking the law, that can be dealt with. As far as parking, if it's posted, I don't think it is, but if it is, that's enforceable. If it's not, there's not an awful lot we can do about that. We can't enforce in the right way. And if it's not posted, I guess there are loud parties or even a long line. So there are things that can be done, and we're willing to cooperate in the doing of those things.
Okay. Thank you. We need your name and address for the record.
Michael Crayton. I live at 25447 Circle Drive. And one of my concerns, I don't have a big concern about Lawrence Tech trying to improve themselves, but I have a concern that the property value is going to drop. I heard the last, I heard the person come up tonight and talk about charter schools. They said, that person said that charter school came in the community, and when the charter school came in the community, the value of the homes dropped. That's, that's our concern. I've been there 20 years, and if I want to pack up and go someplace else, I want to buy a home because I'm going to be retiring, that I can pay for. And if the property value dropped, then that's going to be a problem. Now, if Lawrence Tech wants to rezone and they want to take the circle and they want to move because they're, they also have houses that they're buying on the next street over. Also, they have houses there. They're tearing down, they're buying the houses and they're tearing those houses down. That lets us know that they are going to move, continue to move farther going west, and they're going to buy that property up. If you ever been on the circle, it's beautiful. We raised our kids there, it was safe there, but now, circle, it's loud. The house next to my house, we called the police several times. There were parties going on until 2:00 and 3:00 in the morning, fun fight in the backyard. We had to call the fire department twice. They have it on record. Lawrence Tech has it on record. I, nothing happened until I threatened to go talk to the president, and they sent me to the chief. Then I never got a chance to talk to the dean, but nothing happened until then. What happened is, they got drunk one night having a party, and they start tearing down mailboxes. That is what made Lawrence Tech move, when they started destroying people's mailboxes. We don't mind moving, but we don't want to move and can't go someplace else to buy a home because we've been there too long. You put yourself in that position. You worked all your life, and now it's time for you to retire. And now you got to go, and you can't buy a respectable home in a neighborhood where it's going to be safe. So I hear what you're saying, but you're not telling the truth. The last time we met, I guess it was a month ago, we talked about there was, there was a fraternity group there. They had their big fraternity sign standing on, on the house on the outside. If you go there now, it's not there because Lawrence Tech, you're going to take that down because we don't want any kind of problem with doing what we want to do with the rezoning. That's not there anymore. But they didn't do anything until then. So we are concerned, and it's a lot of us here tonight, it's not all of us here, but we're here tonight in a group because of the fact that me, myself, I can understand that the university wants to improve because everybody should want to improve, improve. But we don't want to go anywhere if we can't get what we want for our houses in a reasonable manner so that we can go someplace else. We heard that Lawrence Tech offered one of our generals for his home just $50,000. My house was worth 10 years ago, $240,000. And we got some people own homes in here 10 years ago, eight years ago, their house was more than that. And I know the house across street, Lawrence Tech paid those people, I think, 100, 210 for their house. So that's our concern, and I'm pretty sure there's some other people going to come up and talk about their concerns too. But it's, oh, it was a party last night around Circle. Last night, it was a party. And now the students coming back, it's going to be parties and parties because you got fraternity groups that lives in the homes around Circle. And people walk that circle all the time, just parade when the students get back. So that is our concern because I sat there and I heard what happened with the charter schools.
I'll give you five minutes.
Thank you.
Before you leave, before you leave the microphone, I want to speak to the charter schools. And the reason I, the reason I want to speak to the charter schools is, the charter school that the fellow that came to the microphone and talked about how it's, its property value has gone down, there are specific problems with that charter school. It's built on a, on a two-lane street that should never have, should never have been built on. And the reason I know that is, is adjacent to my neighborhood. I live right around the corner from it, so I'm faced with that also. Charter schools themselves don't cause property values to go down. This charter school has so many problems, and the traffic is so congested that, that entrance to the school, to our neighborhood, has been changed. There's constant police activity out there because people stop on Telegraph Road and let their kids out on Telegraph Road. I mean, they, they pull into the right-hand lane and let, let their kids out. The kids go back and forth across Telegraph Road over to the Burger King. So this charter school has particular problems, and there's so much congestion up and down Garner that people that live on Garner can't get up and down. That's the problem with this school. I'm not real happy about charter schooling, but I also want to say charter schools themselves don't cause property values to go down.
Sir, I understand that. I'm an educator for 30 years. I teach in the Detroit Public School System. I understand that charter schools does not cause the value, cause problems. People do.
That's right.
Okay, I understand that. Where we live, we live close to the freeway, close to 696, very close to Southfield that you can jump on at any time, and right at the lodge. It's a prime town area. You can jump on either one of those and beat out town fast. And we, what we're saying is, we don't want to give up our property for little nothing because it is a prime time area. And I do know about charter schools. I know about students. I know that bad people do bad things. And I'm retiring as a school teacher and moving out of South. One day, one day, not soon. And I don't want to give my property away.
Okay? Thank you. Before you leave...
Yes.
Could you tell me on this map where you live? I don't... I think it's on like this, but you know...
I live, I can tell you, I live on the west side of the circle.
You got to the left.
That's my wife right there.
They want to see it again. They want to see it again.
Is it the right...
This is in Southfield, 25447.
Yeah, okay, so you're not on the circle.
I am on it.
Or brother. Make it a circle to circle. You're not in the circle drive.
I'm not inside of the circle.
It's a state.
But I live right on the circle between, and it makes me know it's Lawrence Tech. I mean, not, not Lawrence Tech, though.
Lower Lane.
Lower Lane, I'm sorry. And Lawrence Tech has bought those houses.
I'm not familiar with that.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to find out what law in particular you have because the address doesn't, you know, doesn't help understand, that's all. I got you.
Okay. Okay? Is there anyone else that would like to...
I don't know. I hope I can. For that gentleman, this gentleman has a medical...
My house busts up directly against it.
My name is Katie Orno. I've been a resident of Circle Drive in Southfield for 47 years.
Just a second. She, she's talking right now.
We live on a beautiful...
What's your address, please?
I'm being heard.
Your address, please.
My address is 25610 Circle Drive. Our home is located kitty corner from the edge of the proposed rezoning. So between the property that Lawrence Tech wants to rezone and our home, it's approximately 68, maybe 100 feet. I'm not a good judge. I think the biggest problem that we're facing, at least my husband and I, is how secure we're going to be. And I haven't spoken to Lawrence Tech about this. How much access will all of these students have to our street? The security now is very good. Another thing, our property evaluations have just died. We've lost so much money on our home. And I'm concerned that if this plan goes through without some minor changes, without some meeting of the minds between Lawrence Tech and the people who live on our street, that our houses will end up being worthless. And I'm sure many other people in Southfield feel the same way since evaluation of their properties has just plummeted. We have paid taxes on twice the amount, three times the amount that we're valuing at right now. And that is how low it has gone down. So that's my concern primarily. Privacy, safety, not having, as the gentleman before me, a lot of staff, a lot of parties, as he said, they just had another one last night about four months ago. There was one that I think Lawrence Tech had to close the house down and, and tell all of the people to move out. Also, the front of my house faces the road. I see people walking constantly for an evening stroll only. This is excluded, not that many. We don't know who's coming on our street. Also, about five years ago, two roads were cut in to Circle Drive from the parking lot of Lawrence Tech without our knowledge, and I really don't know if they needed to have our approval, but it did affect our street. And we had all kinds of traffic coming from the parking lot of Lawrence Tech onto Circle Drive. Well, since then, they have closed those two roads, so it's almost impossible for anyone to come on our street. And I'm concerned that this might happen again with this new building that they're proposing. So those are my concerns.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Could you give your name and address for the record?
My name is...
If I could.
My name is Gary Jackson, and I live on, in 25592 Circle Drive. In fact, I've been over there almost 36 years, and I have, over the years, I've put more than $100,000 in my home, and I thought I was going to be there until I retired, probably 20 or 30 years down the road. But now, with all the improvements, across the street from my house is 2-Fred House. I came home last night and taken my grandson to college, and there are cars that was parked up and down the street. And then I think Southfield also have an ordinance against overnight parking, but overnight parking appears on Circle Drive. Cars are parked there all night. So what we're saying on Circle Drive is that we're not trying to stop Lawrence Tech from growing, but what they have done, they have done all these things without consulting the residents on Circle Drive. They just seem like they just do what they want to do. And we're not trying to stop progress because we're proud of Southfield, but they did not come, that come to the residents and help me. When we do about it, I got a letter in the mail from the city of Southfield. So I'm just saying we are all disappointed because what we have done over the years, we kept our street pretty nice, and now look at us. We just out here. It just seem like no one cares about us, and we don't have any other choice. I mean, same way here. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes.
Could you give your name and address for the record? Give five minutes.
My name is Will O'Stone. I live in 25551 Circle Drive. I've been there 11 nights.
Could you put the microphone closer to your, speak closer to the microphone? Yeah?
Yes.
That's a little better.
A gentleman from Lawrence Tech sent their, their plans and what have you, and public knowledge for years. I'm not quite sure what he means by public knowledge, but nobody seems to have known anything about this until we got letters from the city planning. When I bought this house last year, it was a real estate agents, it was listed with all the agents who made a ready in. If Lawrence Tech needed it or wanted it, that was the kind of buy. I can't, I don't understand why I was allowed to buy the place if they were going to come back next year and wanted themselves, because it's been buying houses in the area for years. When I opened the house, I intended to stay there forever. I had no intention of moving again. And I'm not healthy enough to look forward to moving again. But that's going to have to happen in the season. The people at Lawrence Tech... People at Lawrence Tech. Who ran this and put it in operation, knew what they were doing years ago, but it was not common knowledge to the people who live there. It seems that, uh, with this plan, with this, uh, building, the big, the building, uh, the, uh, new door, when that's done, there will, without a doubt, in my mind anyway, there might be a small time left. But soon after that, Lawrence Tech will expand again, and the rest of, uh, Circle Drive will be swallowed up by Lawrence Tech. How much time will be given, the people who are living there, be given before they're forced out? Will they be compensated for their house? Will the people be compensated for the loss of value in their house when they can't sell it to anybody because anybody, everybody now knows in Lawrence Tech has plans for that area, and nobody's going to buy a house there? These are things that, uh, worry me. Probably won't be our oven enough to see it. And, but those are my concerns.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
My name is Edna Creighton, I live at two five four four seven Circle Drive. Um, along with my husband, I echo, um, the concern because of the, um, Lawrence Tech is a good citizen, but they're not perfect. And that's what we're allowing them to see, they're not as perfect as they say that they are. And our concern, again, is because of our property. And some of, I'm going to tell you, some of the residents are thinking about going to investors and letting the investors know that, um, this situation is occurring, and that if the investors want to come and purchase our home, that they will.
Stephanie English, two eight seven three five San Carlos, Southfield, forty zero seven six. Um, I'd say to hear all of the, um, residents concerned, and I would like to offer a recommendation. I think this is, situation is similar to the situation with Lear was being built. It's a matter of the bigger entity approaching on our home, which considers, is considered the smaller person or the smaller piece here. Maybe if, um, the council can contact some of the citizen mobilization groups that were over at the Lear, uh, in the Lear neighborhood area, so that the citizens could possibly talk about the impact since Lear was built. There was a lot of concern on the frontiers that Lear's build was going to really impact them. Lear committed to be a very good citizen, as I'm sure, um, Lawrence Tech is trying to be. But to allay their fears, maybe if they had some feedback from neighbors that have been, um, part of a similar type of build expansion, major expansion from a large entity, maybe there could be feedback and compromise and collaboration. Uh, years after the Lear, um, project was completed, they have proven to be good neighbors, they have proven to work with the citizens that had a lot of concerns. And I wanted to ask, maybe if that is feasible to, uh, go back to those, uh, neighborhood groups to possibly conference, you know, with these neighbors, just to get the impact, uh, you know, the impact comparison. Um, I, my property is, uh, adjacent to a private school, I've been impacted, um, those are elementary, junior high and high school students. These are college students, so big kids, bigger problems. Um, it's a potential thing that I know that they have a concern about, but I'd like to bring them solve, and sometimes more impact to compare. Uh, may allay their fears, it may give Lawrence Tech a view, of a bird's eye view of what they really have, you know, to work with. If the, uh, residents, uh, have a good feedback, um, after the Lear project, then it could be comparative, you know, in terms of what the neighbors have to, uh, you know, look forward to, and, and, you know, you making your decision.
Thank you. Lawrence, thank you, I want to take that number five seven.
Oh, hi, my name is Jessica O'Ryan, uh, well, no, I mean.
Your address, please.
Yeah, I gave my, my address, sixty six, it's not a two, they're wrong, uh, number one seven four in West Woodville, but I do have a house in Circle Drive, on Circle Drive. So I'm. So I, I have my concern, uh, the reason my concerning is that I have the house, the house on Circle Drive for more than thirteen years. And the main concern I have is that the real valuation of the house. Okay, even though I attend a lot of planning meetings and, you know, proposing a lot of questions, and I try to help, you know, city and also the university, you know, to achieve their goal. But my really concerning is the, the valuation of the property. In fact, uh, I don't know what, uh, what the university was concerning, uh, but they contacted me, uh, a while ago, I mean, probably two, three weeks ago. And eventually they offered me, and I think their attitude is really, uh, my, my big concern is that they tried to steal house. And this is wrong, very, very wrong. They, you know, my house, I, you know, uh, the investment money we put in is a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars into my house. And the house is more than three thousand worth of it. And it's almost one acre, and they're offering me a very insulting value, which is very, very wrong. And I, I'm afraid that if they have that attitude, then they are going to do to other, uh, citizens around us, Circle Drive. So this is, uh, my biggest, biggest concern. And actually, I was wondering, I even told, you know, tell my neighbor that I, I, I think that, uh, I shouldn't be, you know, saying, you know, speak up for that. But after, you know, I think about it more, and I think that, uh, you know, my concern is the attitude of the, to answer, that Lawrence Tech means really prestige university. I've been here for thirty-two years. And I know I'm going to go back to my country, you know, pretty soon, you know, my mother is ninety years old, I need to go, go back to care of her, and she has bad health. And I want to help her, but, uh, this is going to a dingering, a dingering problem for me, okay? That I will constantly, you know, think about, oh, what, what's going to happen to my property? And, um, so anyway, I hope that, uh, this problem can be solved real, real soon, and I hope that the, the entity problem, the U T U, can, can change, okay? To your concern, to give people a fair compensation, like I said, that, uh, you know, I sink so much money into the property and improvement and everything else. And, uh, you know, the insulting, you know, proposal from their offering is really, you know, very, uh, speechless, I mean, thank you very much.
Uh, a question, uh, is your rent already, rental ready?
Uh, right now it's not, it's used to, and let me tell you this. You know, in one year, what I can bring in from the rental is almost equal to their offering, and that's how long they're holding.
Uh, one of, one of the concerns that we have here in, in Southfield, uh, is how precipitously our home values have dropped just because of the, the coming. And we're constantly, uh, reminded that houses in all parts of the community that, uh, prior to nineteen, uh, two thousand and eight, were selling for two hundred fifty or, or above, are now going for fifty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars, has nothing to do with Lawrence Tech. Now, uh, the economy has really, uh, caused us a major concern. So I understand that you put, uh, you said about a hundred seventy thousand dollars into your, into your home, and now it's not worth anywhere near that. But that's the problem that homeowners throughout the city are facing right now. We're trying to do everything we can to get the, 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 uh, values of the homes roughed back up. It's just that the mortgage companies and the banks are not very responsive to working along with us. So I understand exactly what you're saying, and we'll do the very best that we can.
I know that, uh, the S E V, you know, their offering is almost equal to S E V, which is very wrong. I mean, you know, generally, the, the, it's more to two or two point by terms, I see.
Two, two times.
Okay, it is two times, okay? But their offering is almost equal to that, so I, I think that this is very insulting, and even, even, because I, you know, sink so much money, and also that, like I said, that, uh, my, uh, rental used to be, you know, just above that value, okay, in one year, in one year, and then I lost my property for that, okay? And, uh, one of the gentlemen was saying that, um, it's a primary, it's really a very proud area for me, you know, because I worked so hard, thirty-two years in this, in this country, this, the greatest country in the whole world. I'm very proud to be an American, and I'm very proud to be an owner of Southfield, okay? And, and, uh, I, I think that L T U is a very prestigious, you know, university, even I go back to Taiwan, Taiwan needs people, they want to come to this university to study. So the prestige to me really should be prestige, instead of trying to, I don't know what, what to say, but, um, I hope that, I just hope that they, they can change, you know, their attitude a little bit, and to be fair, to compensate, you know, people.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lance? Well, you hit the end of the question, I'm sorry. Is there anyone else that, uh, wants to, uh, speak? Seeing no one else? The public, or the public hearing is closed?
Yes.
Ms. Lance?
In reading the, the information that this planner gave the council, I would know where L T U is building. I had no idea until I heard the people who live there. Now, uh, this is an amendment to Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan. This master plan, when did the council approve this master plan?
Through the chair, April of two thousand nine.
Do you have it with you?
Yes, I did.
Two thousand nine, you said?
April two thousand nine.
Is that the one that we paid two hundred thousand dollars for, and Nick Mander was here, and they put it on the shelf? The chair, I don't know what the date of this comprehensive.
April thirteen, two thousand nine.
Two thousand one.
Yes, it is.
Two hundred, two hundred thousand dollars, and we put it on the shelf, and it wasn't approved by council, I don't think. Just the payment to the fellow who made it up was paid two hundred thousand. I don't think we adopted that comprehensive plan. Through the chair, one that's out of by the city company. Well, I have doubts, okay? And I, I didn't realize that L T U was intruding on the residential area. There's no way he has said anything about residential area.
Well, the, the reason it doesn't say anything about residential area is, we're in the area. What we're talking about is permission to amend the, uh, master.
That residential area.
It's just the.
Okay, I'm saying the right thing.
Okay.
If I may, Mr. Lance?
Hmm?
If I may.
You may.
But I'm not sure yet. I'm trying to answer one of your questions, but I'll think I'm waiting. I can wait, or I'm trying to answer one of your questions.
I do not, I don't.
I'm trying to answer one of your questions.
Go ahead.
The, the property, this, it's the, Mrs. President said, it's amended for the master plan, it's not dealing with such kind issues right now. It remains east, on the east side of Circle Drive, and there is at least one lot buffer that Lawrence Tech owns all along the proposed amendment before it gets to existing residential occupied homes. So there's, there's, uh, Lawrence Tech owns properties to the west of what they're proposing, and there's a buffer between where they're planning to amend the plan and where people live, residents live. And the planning commission held three public meetings, and these valid concerns were, were discussed, and that was part of consideration. And there's a separation between the amended master plan and the rezoning consideration and where people are living now.
How close are they to the residence?
At, at least one lot away from the residence.
One lot?
At least one lot, all along the property.
Do you own that property?
I, I would defer to, uh.
How long have they owned the property? How long have we owned it?
Did you go to the.
The property that you want to build on, and you want to expand on, how, how long ago?
You know, I don't know the answer to that, we have been acquiring property incrementally since the early mid-sixties, and we own seventeen of the twenty-eight properties in that area. Eleven of the ones that we don't own are on the west side of.
That empty property, that's just lots?
I'm sorry?
Is that empty property or something on it?
Yes.
No, no.
Yeah, there's some, some properties that we have, that we own, are, are, some have had houses removed, some we lease out.
But there were houses on it.
There were at one time, yes.
Yeah.
There were at one time.
There was like one.
No, there was.
Okay, at one time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, I'd like to ask a question to one of the residents. Did you know those houses were owned by Lawrence Tech?
We can tell the homes were, some of the homes were previously owned by Lawrence Tech, because Lawrence Tech did not keep up its property. And the property was the raggedest thing that was on Circle Drive. And my property does butt up against the property line as shown on that drawing. There is no buffer between my house and where that red line is accurate.
Okay.
Nor Jethro's.
What I see is intrusion.
Correct, correct.
On the surrounding residents there. I think that master plan is, was not an approved master plan by council. They have to prove it to me, you've got to prove that to me, because I remember if it's the two thousand dollar one, I, I complained about, they, they paid the guy two hundred thousand dollars before he even finished that master plan, and I said, we could have done it from the library ourselves. So, I think that master plan, uh, is no envoy, because it's been on the shelf for how many years? Five, six, seven, eight years? Okay. I think we've got a problem here. You're forcing expansion of L T U upon, upon these neighbors, upon these properties. And I don't, I think we have to investigate that, and not make a decision on it. We have to check it out. Uh. When did you learn about this master plan?
About a year ago.
About a year ago. Who suggested that you look at it? Somebody in the planning department?
Please, I'm gonna.
Sorry, southern handful, you looked at it, a year ago. I don't think that's, uh, that stands up. That's not the correct master plan, that's three, I don't think we approved it, number one. We only approved the payment of the two hundred thousand dollars. We only approved the payment of the two hundred thousand dollars to create a purpose plan. Now you're taking this plan and telling us that it's our plan. You have to prove that we voted for it. I don't believe we would vote for something to intrude upon the people who live there.
No, 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 no. Demonstrations.
The last year of the year, we don't, we don't want that. We want you to heal, respect you. So, I would like to postpone this, do a little bit of investigation, not make a decision on this today, cause it's too, I, I thought they were building on the old property of the L T U building now. I thought that's where the fees are going. Now I see that it's intruding upon the, that they're going just like the Stratford Academy, your expansion. Well, I think we should postpone it and check into this and investigate this, investigate the validity of that master plan.
Ms. Harrison?
Now, we're, uh, moving to Southfield.
Okay.
Southfield is moving, um, we're trying to be a priority to Southfield, to, to, to the future, vibrant community, um, give value for homes that, uh, help our residents. I've always been in favor of the extension, expansion of Lawrence Tech, it's a great university. And I don't think anyone here, this is the Lawrence Tech, um, now it's Lawrence Tech, I believe it's university. And it, it boosts the city of Southfield, it brings in residents, it brings in business. Um, but the people who live in the area must be treated fairly. I have not heard anyone say we don't want Lawrence Tech to expand because it's an engineering school, it educates folks, they come out to get jobs, many changes area, whatever. Lawrence Tech is good for the city of Southfield. But we are running into a problem because the value, the president said, of the homes in Southfield has just plummeted, sunk about seventy percent of their value. There are people here who are having to move for a variety of reasons and they cannot sell their homes. They're giving them away or they're walking away from them because the homes are upside down because of the houses, right? Back in two thousand eight there, where I know it's true in my neighborhood, now it's a pretty, uh, new neighborhood, oh, about eighteen, seventeen, eighteen years old, houses were built, houses were sold at three hundred thousand, two sixty and three hundred, five years ago, and they're sold at eighty, eighty-five, ninety. That's what they're selling for. So we've got houses up and down the block, relatives in the new home, just vacant, it's gone over all the time. So what happens to the people with the value of the homes has gone down so far? Lawrence Tech looking to expand, which is a good thing. But how are you going to be compensated which sale that is fair? Because across the city, and the home, and I've lived in Southfield for thirty years, I, we all know, those of us who live in the homes, exactly. And those of us who don't live in the homes, we know what's going on in the city, those of the apartments, but for those of us who live in these homes, we know exactly what you're talking about. Exactly. So I think that there needs to be some more work about talking to Lawrence Tech to see what they're looking at compensating this pose, so that they, that you can buy, uh, a house that's comparable, hopefully in the city of Southfield, because buying homes in the city of Southfield, the other hand, you can really get a good deal now. But you've got to have enough money out of these homes to be able to purchase what you have. It shouldn't set you back. And I think that's what I'm hearing. I don't think I'm hearing we're trying to hang in here. I think I'm hearing that the university is expanding and we just want to be treated fairly and paid fairly. So that's what I think. I think there, uh, and I, and I'm not sure the gentleman here today at Lawrence Tech, you know, he will take our message back as to, um, you know, some of the concerns, but that's what I think that I'm hearing. He needs to be compensated fairly, you know, and then progress is progress, it's good for the city of residents. It's good for the region. Renowned, renowned school. That's what I think.
You done?
I'm done.
Okay, Ms. Vance?
We are not talking about the reputation of L T U. I have never, never disagreed with them, I have helped them. It isn't a question of, uh, bad L T U, it's not, not that. But this is wrong now because there's doubt about the master plan and what Gannon and all of them, what feel, what are they going to do for you, if anything? There are lots of things to screen out. We're not ready to vote on it, on this, we don't know enough. I don't know enough. So I suggest that you just ignore this master plan, in this plan, and do a little bit of investigation, a little bit of knowledge, with a more knowledge, and maybe we'll come up with a true story that the people will agree with or not. But in any event, that master plan to me is no employee. Shouldn't even, should have brought it out, put back on the shelf where it belongs. The two hundred thousand dollars, well, it's not on that, we paid two hundred thousand dollars for that.
Through the chair, um...
Yeah.
I just, regardless of how the, um, council decides to go tonight, I just want to clarify that the property that is being amended is currently owned by Lawrence Tech and it does not require purchasing of that private property. And again, thanks for it. Based on, um, based on our ownership data, there is at least a, uh, one parcel buffer between what is being considered tonight and, and where existing residents are, because these concerns have been raised at three public meetings that were held by the planning commission and they were taken into consideration. Again, I will defer to Mr. Reiser about dealing with some of the security logistical issues, but as far as planning, this property is currently owned by Lawrence Tech, does not require the purchasing of private property at this time, and there is at least one parcel buffer to the west that are owned by Lawrence Tech.
Mr. Cassie?
Ms. Harrison, I'm, I'm waiting for the, my second.
Well, I'm a little concerned about that. Uh, it seems to me that there's, like, if Lawrence Tech, um, is looking at expanding, then maybe what they need to look at is expanding for this whole area and make that count and take away the impact of the, of the residents there and purchase those houses from them so that they can go and purchase another house, hopefully in Southfield. But for them to, if we're talking about, we're going something that's right across the street from their home. And we know that when we, when that happens, the traffic is going to increase that value of the house, when they go down further, they're going to be able to sell. Then I think we're setting ourselves up for people walking away from homes again for closure. The neighborhood, um, going to, um, heck.
You're doing great.
Um, and so I think that maybe there's a bigger plan and maybe that's what we should be looking at, because you know, as the license issue, we are responsible for the city, but we're also responsible to the people. They elected us to, to be a voice for them. We're also responsible to the city. Lawrence Tech expanding is a great idea. And so maybe, um, I would, you know, I guess would be interested to know, you know, if Lawrence Tech looking at going further over, and if they are, how about, let's take, here's the land for them and let them go on, pay the cost. Take them on a tour of Southfield, you know, some other houses, maybe a great neighborhood is, you know, that are reasonable, uh, uh, priced. Uh, maybe there are some houses that are for closure that we can, you know, that we've got to improve and we're trying to relocate them and I don't know, that's where the judge gets, trying to work with the bank, I mean, I'm taking it way too far. But I would think instead of peace, millionaire, where negatively impacts the people with the value, that's what they need to get, the value of their home. And it, and which takes away their choices, if they wanted to stay there or move. That's that's it. When you lose the value of your home, you lose your, your, your choice. I'd like to move, and when I'm moving, I don't have enough money to move. I've got a house that's upside down. Or I have a house that they were only giving me thirty thousand, or it would cost me at least a hundred and ten, or comfortable house. So I don't know if that conversation has been had, uh, and maybe it hasn't been, but it seems like the way Lawrence Tech is growing, expanding and all the great things that's going on, and all the people that I know, I, I know a lot of people that, uh, 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 to Lawrence Tech University now. Well, I've been on door on the floor, I haven't been covered, I was hoping that they, that they did. I think you'll be viable for that whole area, college community, campus right here in our city, growth, doors, students, technology. So I think, I... Of course, there may be some people who don't own schools, so I may not be saying what everyone we give at all, um, but, so, our, that's progress, a little bit of funding to treat the residents. I'm done.
Thank you. Ms. Cassie?
Mr. Coe, would you please go back up to that map and the gentleman in the green shirt? Kind of tell, I'd like to see the, the individuals live that are here in the audience, just to get an idea of, of where Lawrence Tech's current properties.
Okay, if we flipped it over to with red chart, where they got the red outline, this is my house, as you see it butts up against my house. The other guy next door to me, this is his house, so there is no real buffer zone for me.
You're, you're, uh, red and ten miles.
No, that's circle, this is ten miles, that's Circle Drive, Lawrence owns this, this house is owned by Jethro, this home is owned by me, which the black line and the red line intersect with one another, there is no buffer.
You're looking at the second, your house from General Avenue, right?
Mm-hmm. Clearhouse.
All right.
So I am in exact month, circle in exact month of year where they're going, and I have a problem that I've already been telling you about.
Okay, all right, all right. I got you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
Now, any, yes, I just want to indicate that where the red line is drawn, splits the parcel and where the hash line, the buffer, that exists, there's no buffer, between the parcel and where the resoning in the master plan.
Okay, how deep the buffer is?
How deep is the buffer? How's the depth of it, or is it a lot?
A lot is, okay, mine's is one acre length. So it's an acre length from my house? Because an acre length is another house from our house. Be about a half acre, acre is the parcel size, about a half hill. But I'm saying my parcel is one acre. So if you're saying it's an acre, I mean, from my house, you can't do it. No, I'm not saying.
All right, so thank you very much. Uh, in the circle, the circle, referred to with the letter P, uh, the portion is surrounded by road, are there any residents that presently live in there?
Say that again? Yes.
Through the...
The athlete was inside the circle.
He was inside the person?
Yes.
It's there to see on that first page. Ms. Jackson?
Ms. Jackson?
Show it on the person.
Well, show it on the person.
This, this line, these two, this line here, and this, that we do not own, are, these two here, the rest are here tonight, we do not own those, we own all of this, all the way around, all of this, we do not own two properties, um, this side coming in, we do not own this one right here.
Hey, right away, sir.
I'm sorry?
That is not right.
He didn't get the right one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a property that you do not own, my property. My property is here, another home owner is here, and another one is right here, and the blue house right here, and there's another home owner right here, and there's another home owner right here, so you're not telling the truth, yeah? So we've been living there twenty years, you just got here. You don't know any, we've been there...
Everybody, please.
Yes.
That's what, sir, sir, please.
Yes, sir.
Your teacher, we spent...
Yes, I don't say it.
I don't want to argue, I'm trying to get some data from, from somebody at work, you, where I go through that thing and, and I try to see the houses, uh, and I try to find out what houses are, are residents, not, not, uh, rentals, but what residents live, where they...
Oh, they can see that.
I actually own the other one because it had to die.
No, no.
And it shows the ones that Lawrence Tech owns and that they are priced everywhere. I mean, it's clear that they're buying property all the way over.
Yeah.
In addition, just to let me get...
Wait, wait, you're not saying the same thing as we are saying, okay?
Now, the, the last building, the last, uh, that they have dotted up are owned by Lawrence Tech or no?
Okay.
Mr., Mr. Reiser should answer the question. Thank you. If he's wrong, he can correct it, sir.
I want to, ma'am, 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 please, I've got to get answers here, I've got a decision to make and I've got to know the facts, so let me, let me get Lawrence Tech to tell me the dots that are on the map, are they Lawrence Tech sites or residents?
Dots represent L T U. Dots, dotted properties are owned by L T U.
In blue land, L T U buy all of the...
Yeah, yeah, I got you, I got you. So, so there's that, so there's that...
One of the times, please, and Ms. Cassie at the floor.
If I keep referring to the street at the, at the intersection of Circle Drive and, and the first east-west road, on the east side, there's a dot. No, uh, this is, okay, okay, and that is Lawrence Tech, uh?
Yes.
Okay, now, straight up, those are Lawrence Tech.
Yes.
And now keep going up with our...
Yes.
Okay, what's to the right of where you're thinking?
That's not our home.
There's a, there's a doorway there. Okay?
There's no, you, now, the empty lots, you tell it also, you tell the empty lots also to live down there, so they go down there.
Yeah, but it's all by Lawrence Tech.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to find out where you people live, is what I'm trying to find out.
Just, okay, everybody's sat. We're on TV, there are people that own, that are trying to understand what's going on. You're not in a microphone.
You're not in a microphone, so the people at home can't hear what's going on. You're off here. The microphone, that cable is, the laser cable just came up, said that they can't hear. So you need to go back to the podium. You need to go back to the podium so that the people at home can hear what's going on.
That's just the lady on, like, the one that I have in front of me, so that I can hear that. Terry, why don't you get up there and try to help assist me? And as we go through that, what I'm trying to find out is where the people who reside and live there and own the property do it. Yeah, I got it, it's right there, okay. So we have a resident living in there that, that owns the property.
That's, that's correct.
Now, if you go up to the next line, you've got two dots there. Those are owned by Lawrence Tech.
That's correct.
Now, to the left of those two dots?
We do not own that.
Okay, and there are dwellings there? Homes or nothing?
There is a home there.
Okay, all right. So if you then come down, uh, to the, uh, ten mile, come down to ten mile, and now go off that east side of the Circle Drive. You've got one lot in there that is a dwelling where somebody owns the property, is that correct?
That first lot we own, L T U owns.
Yeah, keep going up there.
Next one is owned by the gentleman who spoke here today.
Okay, so, yeah, just tell me the ones that are, that are owned by dwelling.
Owned by L T U, what's the number?
Okay. Okay, I got you. Okay, all right. So most of the, so most of the, uh, there's one lady that is actually really, really where the four is, right above where the four is. Everybody else in town?
There's two lots, there are two homes that we do not own, and they're both here tonight.
Okay.
And both have spoken.
What is that, uh, above the R?
Above the R.
Above the dash.
They run across the, and off at the top.
They are at the top of the P. The two lots that we, both those homes on are at the top of the P.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You want to know where the home's at on the east side?
Okay, I, everybody can have a seat, thank you. Um, let me, let me read you before you, I tried to get some, some information here that I can look at. But, right now, the, the question before us, so that everybody understands, is, is a future, a future look at that area that is the Italian parcel, all the homes, Circle Drive, and around it. In other words, back lot of Lois Lane, used to lead to Lawrence Tech, are, are, uh, properties that, that have been for years, uh, put on, on the, uh, and I guess the underwritten, or on the scene parcel, with expansion of Lawrence Tech. And they started buying the property and, uh, because of one reason, and that is to expand their campus. Uh, the master plan for the audience's information is, is an idea of where we're going to be in the future. That is, it has nothing to do with the zoning that is coming up. Another issue. But the, the master plan ought to, to indicate to this body, you know, what, uh, what, what is to be the future, uh, in that area. And irrespective of what the master plan, which is, I agree with this last to some degree, was not very well done, it should have indicated the, the future of Lawrence Tech and where we're going to be expanding to. Uh, because they've grown, they've grown extensively over the years, and if all you have to do is follow their growth, and you would see what the next step for Lawrence Tech is, and that's why they started buying the property. So I think that the master plan, Terry, by the planning commission, should have been what the future site or look of Lawrence Tech would be. Not necessarily if, if they become that, but, but represent what the future is. And, and, uh, and, and that is how cities are developed, is by what is to be and not is what is present. The, uh, so, I am not opposed, I'm not opposed to, to the land use, but I don't think that the land use really represents the future. I think it does part of the way, but not the full extent of what it's gonna look like after I'm gone. And, and so, that's why you have a master plan, and that's why, you know, a planner, uh, goes through the growth of the city and makes changes from residential to commercial, why they put a hamburger joint on one corner and not the other, because that's, that's the way that the city was planned. And, and that's how, you know, the town center came to town center is because way back when, uh, that used to be the L T U property, and they switched properties across the street for expansion purposes. And, and, uh, the town center buildings came to us, you know, way before they were built, saying that was going to be a heavy, intense development. In, in, in that time, we didn't even see the town center. What, what we did see was the color of that triangle and, and what it indicated would be built at some time in the future. And that's what a master plan is. And it's very important that you understand that because it, it's totally different than what you are, uh, directing your questions to, is because if anybody owns a home there and knows that Lawrence Tech is gonna expand at some time because you know you're building, buying houses there. I mean, in, in the, the only problem is that I see is that we are in an economic fall, a residential fall, and, and, uh, the owners of property debate, not just in Southfield, but everywhere, uh, their decisions based on economics and not really, you know, I, I have to believe that if Lawrence Tech came here and gave you twice as much as appraised, you'd probably sell. And if you see what it was appraised at, you probably wouldn't sell because, for example, I have a colonial home next to me that man five years ago paid two hundred fifty thousand dollars for air conditioning and new roofs or whatever. The guy sent twenty-five thousand dollars into the house. He can't get ninety-nine thousand dollars for the home. And, and, and that's reality, that's reality. You know, and that means that my house is worth the same thing it is my house. If I was to sell my house, I, I take the average, I, I had a house, I had a twelve-mile mansion, and, and these are all, you know, great houses, great neighborhood, and I've got houses that sell for fifty-four thousand dollars. And, and, you know, that, so, not saying that's what you're suddenly hopeful, but I'm saying what is reality, and that's why these short sales are, are appearing. People are just walking from, uh, these homes because they owe, they, they owe twice as much as the home is on the market for. And, and, uh, and so I got to separate the economics from the master plan. That's what I'm really getting at. What is this piece of property going to be in twenty-five, thirty years from now? And that's really what's before us tonight. And, and then we have to look at the zoning. And then after the zoning comes the fight later. So, those are the steps that we're really looking at tonight, trying to explain the process here. And, and so, you know, I have to agree with, even though it is partially, uh, right, the master plan represents the, I don't think it really represents the future of that site. And I, and I guess that's my comment. I'm just gonna have to, uh, make a decision on whether it goes one way or all the way, for a, for a change in the master plan, so.
Okay, Ms. Daley?
Thank you. Um, just so that I'm clear, what you're asking, uh, Lawrence Tech, is to change the property that is now, uh, single family to E R O for educational and medical institutions? So no living on that? You're gonna make it a school type thing? Am I correct?
No, not really.
Okay.
Uh, in the, when we get to the next step, which will be the rezoning, we'll be talking about E R O, which is Educational Research Office. Under that zoning, it does permit residential, uh, for, for housing for students. So we could build the dormitory, and that's what you'll be hearing about in the stage that we call the site plan approval process. So the first step, as pointed out, is trying to get to what should it be someday? If your thinking matches ours in terms of, of twenty-five-year type thinking, you know, all of our planning looks out twenty-five years, and that twenty-five keeps moving. So when we say we're gonna build something in five years, sometimes five looks like ten before we start. And, and so the next step will be to talk about the E R O, which will allow us to build dormitory housing.
And that's really what you're planning on with?
That's what we'll be bringing forth in the plan, in the site plan approval process. That is correct.
Okay. Does the buffer currently exist today, or is that part of the plan? You're using some of your property to create that buffer?
We're using property that we own to create the buffer. And we are not asking to change the city master plan to include that buffer. We're not asking to include that in the rezoning. We don't intend to build on that right now. I mean, that's for a future time. Which, if, if, if I can expand my answer to almost get at a question you started to direct at me and never got asked, if you don't mind me asking it, or answering it. And that's, we, you know, we, we, we asked, how far should we go? And, and you had started to ask, did you consider? And we did, we did consider how far we should go, at least from our thinking, uh, from the rezoning aspect, which requires that the city master plan is first. But you, you think about the issue of property values. Property values can go up from having the presence of the university. Now, we're not out to try and take advantage of anybody by the low economic conditions on the sale of houses. We're not trying to buy anybody's house to build or to do this rezoning or do anything we're planning to do now. Not at all. We're trying to be a good neighbor. At a future point, when I'll be before you talking about our, our campus master or our, our site plan approval, I'm gonna mention a place like it's only two-story. It's a bad decision to be building two-story. But if I tried to sell you a four-story, you wouldn't approve it, and you'd be wrong to approve it, I think. So we didn't even try to sell it. We've entered since nineteen fifty-five. We're trying to be a good neighbor. We're not trying to force anyone out. We're trying to buy as things become available. We're trying to buy at fair price. We've had properties offered to us for sale that we can't afford to buy, and we let it go. We have a broker who works at our big house signature, who when they see properties vacant and potentially available for sale, they do a comp look at, which right now is not a good way to do business, I would say. But they look at costs, and they come to our B P of finance, and they say, is the property vacant? We've done comps on it, it looks like about fifty thousand dollars. Should we make an offer? And the answer is yes, and we've done that, we did that. There's one person talking about that tonight.
Okay, and is that in the area of the Circle Drive area where you're looking at the comp, any other homes that have been comp available?
Yeah, as it, nothing required for what we're talking about doing here tonight?
No, I'm not, and I understand, I'm just trying to get in my mind, just, just like the neighbors, the residents that are here, they're trying to get in their mind what Lawrence Tech is trying to do.
Yeah.
Because they, they obviously was not a part or was not given that information. They didn't know, or still don't know, to let me see this, what your plans are or were, what you're thinking. And in order for them to see how it's gonna impact them, they need to know and understand what you are thinking, not only today, but tomorrow. And that's what I'm trying to help me to understand, and hopefully it'll help them to understand. That, that's what I'm trying to do here. So where I'm going with the buffer piece, that is not existing today. And I'm hearing you say, no, it's not.
The buffer exists today, yes.
Okay, so just playing.
The buffers that are there between where we're asking you to work, have down tonight, there is a buffer of property that we own between what we're asking you to have down tonight and any adjacent property that we don't own.
Okay, and is anything on, is this land, is anything on that land, like trees or?
Uh, yeah, I, you know, I, I can't answer it in all honesty. I know there's something there. I mean, there's either trees or something there. I mean, uh, nothing is just sitting there alive right now.
Okay.
On those buffers.
Okay, and the homes that you're acquiring, when it's possible, are they turning into like frat houses and that kind of?
Okay. We own several of the, of, the houses on the left inside the Circle Drive.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, there are eleven that we, uh, seven and four, and it's seven that we do not own. Total of eleven that we don't own between left and right of Circle Drive. Of the seven that we don't own, uh, some of those are owned by people who do, a couple of them, I should say some, it sounds like a lot. A couple are owned by people who lease them out to our students, that's true. We have a couple that we own, a few, and we lease them out to students in line with the city ordinance that no more than four family, uh, names are, are, can occupy a home. We have students who try to turn them into quote frat houses. When we find out about it, and we learned about one that snuck up on us during the plan commission review, and we immediately took action to remove it. It didn't have anything to do with, and, and I know it looks like it, but it didn't have anything to do with, oh, we're going for site plan approval, get the sign down. I mean, that would be a little too obvious. We've done that before, when we weren't coming before everyone for site plan approval. We've come, when we see something like that occurring, we put an end to it. And, and like somebody pointed out, as far as the activities in the area, we're not perfect, but we try to control them. And, um, maybe we can do a better job of doing that, but we do have control to the behavior of students who reside in the houses that we own. We try also in a couple of houses that we don't own that are rented to students, but we have less control there, a little more difficult for us.
Okay, and I guess what, the, the last thing I guess I'm gonna ask you, um, are you willing to have more conversations and partner more with the residents that are staying here, since this won't change overnight? Your residents are gonna be there, they're still gonna have these concerns. I know this isn't the first time you've heard them, because you, uh, went through the planning commission, and I know some of the things were brought up there. Um, but for it to get to us and. Um, but for it to get to us and we still are not hearing any, uh, partners and conversations that say, hey, okay, this is a problem, we don't know what to do, but you, you live here. Tell me, what can you suggest so that we can be here together until something changes? Are those kinds of things? Are you, are you looking at those with the residents that are here?
Yeah, there's a couple of things. Number one, the, uh, one idea came up here tonight, uh, and a woman came and spoke about what happened over by there. I thought that was a very good idea, that we'd like to try to capitalize on that idea and get somebody to talk, uh, bring the neighbors together to some of them there. So we're willing to do that, and, and would look forward to doing that. That, that was something I never thought of, and it was brought up to my attention till tonight, so I thank her. Uh, so we will do that. The other thing is, for those who are interested, September first, uh, we'll get seven o'clock at night, we're having a session, uh, that we're gonna open to the public. We'll get something on our webpage, and we'll certainly invite all of the council and anyone who's interested in coming to attend that meeting. And it's only to paint the picture of Lawrence Tech and where we're going in the future, and, and try and do, in effect, a better job of, of talking about what we're talking here tonight, what's important to us, where are we going? And a couple of years of hearing this talk about an engineering and science building, I'd like to say it sooner than that, but it's not going to be. Uh, so, but you need to know about that, and you need to hear about it, and the community needs to hear about it. So we're gonna do that on September first at, at seven PM on the campus of LTU. So I, I hope that that will help open communications. Now, we won't be talking in detail about which house and everything that we own and have, but we will talk about such things as, uh, but we don't know what it will do to home values in that area. I'd like to believe we've helped them rise, uh, but we're not predictive of the future anymore, do you mark? So we don't know. We don't believe we're doing anything ever to diminish the value of the properties. And that's why we didn't want to go too far west with our requests. That's why I stopped for a bit.
Right, and I think most of us agree with you that Lawrence Tech has a, a name that carries, you know, a lot of prestige. We're, we're not trying to say that. What we're trying to do is make that partnership with the residents that are there work, because you're hopefully gonna be there, and hopefully they're gonna be there as long as they want to. But we need you to come together and work together, so for the betterment of everyone. You, you need students, because you get students from all over the world that come to Lawrence Tech to study, and they stay in that area, and we need everybody to get along and to, to be happy. And right now, we're not hearing that, so that's what I'm trying to say. What can, what things can happen to cause that partnership or reunion to be, you know, more virtual?
That's what we want to do on September first, to help the neighbors, not only the immediate neighbors, but the community realize how important we are, I think, to one another. Because if we go down, and I don't mean to go out of business, but I mean, if we become less than we are today, I guarantee you the value of the whole city neighborhood will be less than our today, all things being equal, the economy. But the viability of our university, our ability to succeed, we just have a consultant called the Spudist. They told us that we can't keep trying to draw on this key, on, on sixty-mile radius. That's not good enough anymore. We've done that for eighty years. And if we're gonna be viable at all and survive, uh, in a meaningful way, we have to reach not only outstate, we have to reach upstate, and as you mentioned, internationally. We need to do all of that, and we don't do that well today. And for, two years ago, we started reaching out outside of the state of Michigan with, with people in Michigan's going out and actually trying to get students coming in. We need to bring them to Southfield, and we want it to stay here. We're having a good fortune with international students and bringing them in. And we want to continue that. But we're gonna need a couple of things in the future. We, we need housing now to do that, and we're gonna need, uh, research and, uh, for engineering and science building for, uh, applied applications, and we'll be here in a couple of years talking about that. So we want to bring you on board what's coming down the way, uh, because we need these things in order to be viable and help maintain and protect the value of the neighborhood.
This is true, and this tie-in to, I believe, what we're trying to do here in the city of Southfield, making it a walkable community, not only for Lawrence Tech, but when we do bring the students, you have things for them to do, restaurants and places for them to go. So I can see this as a bigger picture beyond just today and beyond just what's here on paper. And that's why it's more important that we have a collaborative partnering relationship with the people that's here, because our residents are just as important as the ones, the ones we have now as the ones that will be coming into the city in the future.
I agree.
But that's what I was trying to say.
Mr. Davis?
My memory serves me, there was a meeting at the school, at the library, and the fellow who created this, the master plan, when he gave it to us, it was obsolete. Because he took all the information from buildings and from part of the city, built five, ten years before that, and I accused him of that, I remember that. So there was nothing modern and new in this master plan. So this master plan is probably fifteen years old. Now, if you, if he created, created the master plan today, there would be a vast difference. And I accused him, and I told the city then, we could have done that. We could have gone to the library and did the same thing. So to me, that master plan is invalid, we're wasting our night here, we're wasting our time, because it's obsolete, it's wrong. And, and this is what you're, you're talking about, and this is what you're planning, an old master plan. You can't tell me the council voted on it, because I remember they didn't. I don't know what, what you believe, but I remember. So, uh, I don't think we're gonna settle it tonight. I think there'll be a vote on it tonight. There shouldn't be. This is too many questions, too much doubt, too much wrong, which many questions have to be answered. These, these people not gonna walk out of here and you're gonna vote them, and they're walking out negative. It'll be chaos. You can't do that to these people or to the area alone. So council, make your minds up, delay it, investigate it. LTU will wait a little bit longer. Maybe things will be different.
Yes?
Yes.
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Yeah, I, I have a suggestion. That's the opposite of here. I don't know much about this master plan, but it's come up before. It is outdated. Whatever it is, it needs to be, um, brought up Tuesday. What's going on, times have changed here. And Terry, you haven't been here that long. This is what you had, and you picked that up and you're working with it. But what I hear, saying, hear a thing is that we're not going to make any decisions on a plan that's obsolete. And we now need you to make some decisions or do something with this plan to, uh, fix up what we're talking about that we can take action on. That's one. The other issue is, is that we're going to attack. And for the folks that are here, you know, I agree in some communities, when you, you know, the university, the value of the home, the homes go up. It may not be a home that you wanna let in, because you got some cop kids around and they have different activities, but you may rent out that house, and you may make a bundle from, you know, if you're at University of Michigan, and you have some homes downtown, right in the capital, houses that were a bundle. People hold on to them, they rent them out every year. But do they murder them with their families, their kids? I mean, it's not the neighborhood that you move, when you, when you move in the house. The neighborhood is going to change. So they put up a door to houses, and I let the door, you know, I went to Michigan State. Nobody is living next door to a door, because they, they're, they're the piece of college life. You're coming, you're going, hours, you're meeting, you're walking around. I always thought that we should have built something over, over the freeway so that the kids could have access to what's happening on that freeway, you know? Just like we have other pieces of the freeway. Just that whole area, where it's walkable, and when that town goes over there too. So it, it seems to me that if a person decides to keep a house there, you know what's coming. And it's probably not where you want to live. You may wanna keep it, thinking that the value may go up. Maybe it won't. Uh, it's, it's a chance you have to take. Nothing is ever guaranteed. But I think Lawrence Tech, uh, really, um, just needs to say, yes, we are really going to expand and, um, you know, the people they're waiting, you know, that maybe, you know, the value will go up and come back and offer. Or we could just go ahead and get a master plan and say, they're expanding. Let's do something for the people. Let's do something for you. Now, the houses, the value of the houses in Southville are still somewhat low, if you want to relocate. There's another house out here, uh, that you, that you might, might, probably be the house. You might be happy here. So I think there are two different things going on here. I'm not going to vote on that, I'm not gonna vote for that, because it, there's, there's too much of the thought. I'm not opposed, I'm not opposed to what's here just by itself, but there's more to the story than just what's here. There's more to the story. So I would not, uh, vote in support of this tonight, because I think there's, there's more work, um, that needs to be done, and to spread this back. The differences as well as the differences. I'm not, I would not be comfortable, I would not be comfortable to vote it down, no. Because I think Lawrence Tech should have been. I would not be comfortable to vote it up yet, because I don't think the people there, so far, they've, they've known that, well, he was offered, which was, um, the sort of property. I don't think that that's better. Well, because I didn't vote it up, and I didn't go it down, I'd like to say no. Because I would not say yes to something that I said I don't think is going to be. But I think we're on our way. I don't think it'll be, you know, that much longer. I think Lawrence Tech will wait, uh, and work with us, and see their urgency. I think that they will want to work with us. You know, how can we make that happen? Um, I'm not sure what needs to be done in between, uh, but I think that we're on our way to something that everybody, there will be a win-win for it for everybody. Although it's hard, it's a house that you've lived in for a long time. That's simple.
Okay. I don't have anything else to say about this?
Just, just to respond, again, this is the first part of a three-step process. Master plan, amendment, later foundation for rezoning consideration. And then what was, the intent was to come back in September for council consideration of the site plan. We do know that there's the intent to build a dormitory. And I'm going to let Mr. Verizer talk about the timing of, of the dormitory. I agree with you. There's the immediate need on the parcels that are being considered tonight, and then there's the long-term revisions to the master plan that looks twenty-five, thirty years, all the way out, not only for Lawrence Tech, but in other areas of the city. But since we, in this particular case, we do have a real project that will, is working its way towards council, the consideration of building a hundred and fifty-one unit dormitory. And again, I'll, I'll let Joe speak to the urgency and the timing. Tonight, a vote, um, does not necessarily have to be made, but within a month or so, it's critical for their, their construction period and their marketing period. Otherwise, they lose a whole year. And I, and again, I'll let Mr. Verizer talk about it. So there's the immediate request to consider amendment of the master plan and rezoning. If not tonight, next month, because the site plan is bound and put after. Then there's the long-term look at the master plan, twenty-five and thirty years out, takes us, uh, maybe to the rear parcels or of Lois Lane. So those are the, there are two considerations for, for your, um, you know, your review. The first one was the master plan, the second one was the rezoning tonight, and was the intent to bring back the site plan in September. We do know there is a specific request for a site plan to build a specific housing unit, dormitory of a hundred and fifty-one units. And I, I, if I could, through the chair, I'd like to ask Mr. Verizer to talk about the timing of that, and why it's critical that this process at least continually moves through, if not tonight, within the next month or so, so that his project's not impacted by, by here.
Mr. Verizer?
Thank you. The, uh, I hesitated to talk about the urgency tonight, because I know you don't want that to be your consideration. We don't wanna make our problem your problem, right on that. So we didn't talk about that tonight. But as it's come up now at the eleventh hour here, it's, I have to mention it. The, uh, we rely, we knew, we, we saw this on the horizon. We relied on a consultant to help us package it in a way that we could sell it to our board, the need to have housing. And we are going through that process. We're on the last steps of that to get their final buy-in right now, and theirs is all subject to the actions that you take. The, the timing goes like this. We're working with the developer, and they're the ones that came up with the package, the design and everything, and we've been working with them rather intensely, and we've gone through this process with the city. When we get done with this, we have to break ground. We're gonna lease it back from them. And we'll have buyout options at various points, because we can't afford to build it with our own money. We don't have the money to do that. So we're gonna lease it back, and we need to be getting that thing filled up to a certain point as quickly as possible. Our opportunity for doing that comes in the fall. Our, and our enrollment does not go up at all. If anything, it goes down a snidgen in this term. Okay? Our time to get students and our time to fill a dorm is in the fall. In order to do that, we have to have marketing that starts no later than January. And we are all ready to the point of them only gonna say, where's the data? Where's my material? Can I market in housing or not? Have we got a place to put them or don't we? So we're up against the wall, that we didn't feel a need to share with you tonight, but it came up to us. So we're up against the time where we need to break down by November one. Uh, otherwise, we run into the inability to complete in time for school in the fall, in August, mid-August of next year. In addition to that, another problem that's ours, not yours, is the cost. And then the more we push it into winter construction, and the more we try to compress the schedule, the greater the cost comes, the less we have the opportunity to say this is the way to do. So we get the cost between a rock and a hard spot. And, and so now I've shared that with you, and you know what the urgency is from our perspective, and we hope you'll take that into account with your deliberations.
I'll let Travis one more time, because just, just so, uh, the people understand, we can talk about the master plan, because that's the issue right now on the table. Now, when we, in two thousand nine, when the council passed the Future Menus Plan, you get a big map of the city, and we have the different colors representing zonings, and you look at the map at the council, and you approve it. If that map, if, if the person who did the planning at the time would have interviewed the Lawrence Tech people, for example, the Lawrence Tech said, yes, in the future, we plan on going west to, uh, Circle Drive. That where you have the yellow today would be the grayish blue. And if that were the case, that would be all the ERO. And you never know the difference, because you don't look at the master plan. But the petitioner came in and said, we, we have the zoning, we just want you to do the site plan. Then we would be here with the zoning and the expansion of the master plan. We'd be looking at... be here with the zoning and the expansion of the master plan, we'd be looking at a site plan. But because of the uniqueness that that did not happen, that doesn't mean that the plan, just by the fact of growth, isn't showing the same thing that the future plan would have shown. I hope I'm clear on that. For example, we are looking at plans at the regional level, 2035. And somebody looked at that map and said, hey, you know what? That's all farmland. Rather than show shopping center. What doesn't mean that this shopping center is there now or 10 years from now, but in 2035, they see roads widening, they see bridges built, they see shopping centers built. And that is the way planning is done. And I only say that is because only the use, the plan with, if this gentleman wasn't here for help to you tonight, and Terry would have came in and said, you know, we should change the master plan because Lawrence Tech one day is going to expand. What we have before us tonight is just an expansion of the master plan, and you never know the difference. Because it wasn't hiding anything from you, but the master plan probably projects something into 20 years, 25, 30 years from now. The only reason that it's before us tonight is because all of a sudden, LTOU sees that they need additional growth. If you do that, they need the extension of the master plan, and then a zoning, and then a site plan. There's three different procedures. So the people who live there, those of you who are here, really, if that was all purple, you'd never know the difference unless you could read the master plan. And if it was some planning agency way back, if we paid $200,000 to that pretty much of colors and codes on there, it's zoning. So I guess with before us tonight should not affect anything because the only thing it says is that someplace in the future, that is going to be changed to a different zone. And, but in this particular case, this gentleman from LTOU said, but we're really planning on, after you do the first two steps, we're going to come in with the site plan for some student dormitories. Now, at that particular time, the individuals who live there still have at every one of the steps input into what happens. So even though it's zoned, if it's zoned tonight, it still doesn't have anything bearing what is going to be there. But it'll tell you what can be there, but doesn't, I mean, it will tell you student dormitory, you're done it all because there's several kinds of uses in ERO. But since you know it's the dormitories, then you have a site plan. And that site plan, you have, you can have bumpers, you can have roadways, you can have some protection. And I know you raised that thing about Bradford. The gentleman that was here with Bradford, that poor guy, lived on a dead-end street, so it's called, which is now. And Bradford built on the north side and left three houses, three or four houses on the south side. And those poor people get all the traffic because there's only one way in and one way out. They have a little road in the back with a dissection that has no for one way. But, so, I do not believe that this will have an adverse effect on your properties. I really do not believe that this, this safeguard, I'll get to you in a minute, President Lloyd will acknowledge it. But I believe that when you see the site plan, which I haven't seen yet, that you can build in all kinds of restrictions in that site plan that protects the way you're living today and has little or no effect on your property. And that is done all the time in the city, in cities, in counties, and all over the place, that site plan is the thing that really would make you have the quality of life with the zoning. And I guess you just have to take my word for it, that you can put so many restrictions on site plans that you make it worse, work the way you want it to work. And yet still maintain the quality of life that you have. Now, if you're trying to sell your property, it still would be an advantage because some people who are looking in the marketplace, they don't want to invest in those homes because they're probably looking for investment property so they can build student housing next to that. That, you know, sometime way in the future, in the future. But what I'm saying is that because the university is expanding, that makes property values go up. And if, in other cases where there's no activity, those properties are non-sellable. And we've, if I have news, open the newspaper and look at how your sales, you can see how you're going for 30,000, 28,000. And because there's no activity, there's nothing making that house go up and have value, other than if the economy goes up. So I personally think that it is really a good move on your part to have something positive happening in your area. And I really feel that way. You know, I guess time will only prove it all. Yes, ma'am. I'm sorry. I thought they gave me a raise.
Ms. Seymour, head of the panel.
I'm trying to pull this together in my mind, but what I see the residents complaining about are conditions that exist now in the neighborhood that are not conducive to a normal way of residential living and of division and concern. They have to be addressed. Some of the things that I've heard are, I wouldn't want, I wouldn't want to live with some of the conditions that some of you have experienced. And I don't think LTOU wants those conditions to exist in that area. I, at least, I know what it benefits. Some of them are beyond, I think they try to clean some of these stuff. No one's deliberately encouraging those kinds of activities. But what this rezoning does, I want to pick up a moment, which I forgot to say. The whole purpose of the rezoning is to get to the point where we can, where they can build this, this two-story, two-story student housing, which if all the residential people were out of there now, they would be building three or four stories.
Four stories, kind of like a four.
But they're keeping it a two-story because they don't want it to be imposing on the residential there now. Though I have heard of the plan so far, just in the general conversation prior to this meeting, is the way they're orienting the building. They're doing everything to make it unintrusive or non-intrusive to the residential. I mean, they've got to have the student housing. They've got to have it. There's not much that can be done about the value of the housing going down the town and all of the city. So what I want to know from any of the residents, if you want to make a statement, are you objecting to the residential student housing that's going there now? Is that, is that, can you, I don't understand what you're saying.
I guess we've been here all night.
I mean, is that, is that the bottom line here, that the zoning is going to be?
Could you restate your name for the record, please?
Michael Crain. What we're saying, and I do respect you and what you're saying as an official, but you're not in my spot. You don't live where I live. You don't feel the pain that we feel. You have not been there to see what happens with a five-bedroom home with fraternities living in it. You haven't experienced that, sir. Now, picture this, our auditorium on the circle, where you've got over 150 kids. 2:30, doing week days, doing week days. Well, I got to go to work and teach students, and I got to be at my best if I want to be the best teacher. We had to deal with this. They were parked, five cars in the parking lot, and tell everybody to walk to the park. And soon as we call the cops, well, as soon as we call Lawrence Tech, they come, they turn their light on, and they disrespect Lawrence Tech security. But when we call the city policemen, everybody runs in the woods because it's a big wooded area. And everybody be quiet. And when the police come in the house and search, and he puts his flashlight, and he just looks around with the same thing with the fire department. They brought a big fire department truck. We call this a big barn fire in the backyard. I heard a shooting. Now, you're saying that, okay, property's not going to go down. Why not? Who's going, who's going with three kids under the age of 10 going to move to that area?
Could you just answer the question? I, you know, we've been here a long time, and I don't, I don't want to get into a long debate about philosophy.
I'm not, sir. I'm not.
But you heard him, and he doesn't even live on the circle. He doesn't even know. We live on the circle. We have. He is the petitioner. He is the petitioner. He gives different rules than.
He does not know, sir. And that's what we're saying. We're saying, we're not stopping Lawrence Tech. We're not trying to force them out of anything like that. But this is a situation where the big fish eat up the little fish. Now, he was saying, he was in between a hard rock, a hard place and a rock. Now, you're trying to make us switch spots with you. You're going to the green grass, and now you're trying to put us in the hard spot. And we, and we're saying, we live in a situation, we live in a situation where you got all of the major freeways. Who would not, what investor would want to invest in this area? And we've been pushed out. It's the big fish eat up the little fish. Some years ago, Lawrence Tech wanted to run, I guess, this sewage. Oh, they just brought people in, just pushed us out, put big things on our lungs without the people knowing it or doing anything about it. It was the big fish eat up the little fish. And this is the thing that's going on now. And we're saying that, listen, you got to hear what we're saying. That's what we're saying. And we're here tonight. We came tonight, and this is not all of us. Some people couldn't make it tonight. But you put yourself in our position. Where would you look? Where would you go? You're talking about going busy, going to find another home someplace else. But if you don't have any money, enough. And then you're going to have to build another place. I'm getting older. I don't want to be in a situation where it's shooting, robbing, and you don't either. That's why I moved to the circle. Because I could let my kids walk around that circle, and you said, I heard you said, and it was a lie. You said that it was some other people that owned houses on the circle and they rented them out. That is not true. Lawrence Tech rent those houses out. They owned those houses. That gentleman right there on, owning it's the first house on the circle, soon as you turn the circle, you're right there. And he, and he owned that house, and he rented it out to senior citizens. It was a senior citizen place that he had rented out, had senior citizens in it. And Lawrence Tech owned the house that they torn, that they torn out in front of it. We hadn't called the cops so many times because they had pit bulls. And I got attacked by one of them. And I had to turn around and face him off and bad-boss him. Now, you put yourself in that position.
I'd like to continue my question. Quick, sir, could you just come back? I'll ask you. The picture I'm getting here, the mental image, and I guess the discussion, you've got a lot of conditions in the neighborhood that are really interfering with what you consider normal way of life. And what I'm asked, what I asked the question was, apart from those conditions, apart from the misbehavior of certain people, and things that I think could be controlled by really strong enforcement, if we had a good plan for that. But apart from that, are you objecting to the building of this student dormitory? If these other conditions could be cleared up so that you could return to some kind of a normal, you know, you wouldn't have to be looking over your shoulder or a minute to see what was happening next. I'm trying to separate those activities from building to building, which is really what we're trying to do.
We are not objecting. We're saying that there are some problems that come along with this situation that's going to run the value of our homes down. That's what we're saying. We're saying we want Lawrence Tech to expand. We want that. I would want you, your house to expand, to get bigger and better. But there are some situations that we've already experienced from smaller homes that people say, oh, I don't want to deal with this. You know, there's people coming on property all the time. And I've heard some things, I've heard some names called, because the house is right next to mine. And I've heard some names that I don't even want to repeat.
But that's separate from the building of the dormitory.
I just answered your question, ma'am. I said we don't object.
Okay, so that's not the issue. The zoning of the dormitory is not the issue. The issue is what's going on there right now.
No, the issue, the issue is what has happened and what's going on now, and what would be a bigger problem with what's happening now. Because right now, you're dealing with fraternities, and you're dealing with a small group. But when you start talking about, oh, it's a big dormitory here, plus it's some medical research where parents might not want their kids around a medical research building for situations or problems, you know, so they might not even want that. So you're dealing with a lot of things that can drive the value down. You're dealing with putting a research center. Well, you've got to bring different viruses and growth viruses and.
Where are you getting that from?
Where are you getting that from? Didn't you say it was going to be a research building?
No.
Oh, whatever. All right, all right, okay.
There's.
Education will be.
No, well.
No, it's not, sir.
Well, I thought it was something else that I heard that was going.
No, this was a, this was a designation that was on a document called the master plan. And it was specified, I'm not sure why it was specified, but that's got nothing to do with what's being proposed to that site. It's merely a two-story student dormitory.
Okay, let's stay there.
That's all, that's all that's being proposed.
Okay.
Not a medical building, not a research building, nothing in that area at all like that.
Okay, let's continue with that. Any other questions?
Well, the activity that you're talking about, are you thinking it's going to get worse with the student dormitory?
When you got more, if you, if you had 10 people that build next door to you, and you had trouble with them, and you added 100, do you think you'd have more trouble?
Well, no, my point is, in order for them to, you said that you, nobody's objecting to the growth or expansion. In order to grow and expand, they have to have more student housing because they need to have more students there. That's what this is all about.
I understand that.
Okay, the marketing of students, they're trying to bring students from all over the world that want to come here, and they've got to have additional housing. The dormitory is much better than the individual houses. The, the dormitory is much better than the individual houses that the students are living in where they can party all night. So, I, I'm not-
Do you believe that?
It could be.
No, that's, if you have more people, if you have ten people living next door to you, and they stayed up and partied all night. I'm just using this for an illustration. And you add to that ten, another hundred. Do you think you'll have a worse of problem with ten than you do a hundred?
Well, I think that's a different, the circumstances in your dormitory to have much stricter compliance with their rules. You have, you know, you have, you have curfews, you have, it's a much different environment than just kids living in houses where they have nobody supervising them.
I think you've got a lot of people here that stayed on campus. And I'm pretty sure that we know what we can do. Late at night, I went to Tuskett University. And on the weekend, you know, we can get pretty potty. And, and, and most students on the weekend, that's when they had the parties.
Okay, I understand. The public area has been closed for over an hour.
Okay.
She asked, she talked to the microphone. She answered one question that's been going on for ten minutes. So I, I asked this, sir. I, I asked her a question. Thank you, thank you. Uh, mayor?
Can we, can we, we need to address the concerns of the residents. Their concern is the behavior of young people who we all know how they learn and how they act. Uh, uh, to me, it should be for several things. If Lawrence Tech owns a home, why couldn't they rent them to an adult population outside of the college population? There should be some type of barrier between the building and their neighborhood. They just want a neighborhood. They're not opposed, they're set to the building. But I don't think it's, it's, it's a prudent thing for Lawrence Tech to own a home and rent them to college students and expect them to blend in a regular neighborhood. And those are the type things that we need to answer. You know, the kids party there, that's what they do. But if you're putting them next to working people and families, it just doesn't match. And that's the conversation that I think we should have to address those and try to separate that from the, the site plan and the, and all the other things. Because I wanna have a conversation with Lawrence Tech. Why are you mixing the children in that neighborhood? We're not saying, make a profit, rent it to, there's a lot of people that want it in homes. Rent it to family so you can have a homogeneous environment. But you haven't done it. I mean, I, you, you have-
Can I respond to that?
Yeah, sure.
You know, I hadn't thought about that. And it's almost obvious. But I, I don't think I'd ever wanna get into the world of age discrimination and if his kids will do that today. But if we wanted to say that we can rent it and that we agreed to rent it to single family only, it might still be a student, and they still might throw a party, but it won't be two, three, or four. If it became something like that, define it acceptable. Combined with working together with the city on the issue of enforcement to the degree that the city can and the degree to which we can. We will do that.
On most camps, as I know in Michigan State, they have a section for family housing. And you have to be a family to rent there. And then they have the rest with dorms. But you are interfering and a homogeneous. They bought the home to live there in a regular neighborhood. And it's just not matching. The other thing is, how are you gonna stop this thing of running in the woods and all that? How are you gonna take that dormitory and make sure that the woods behind it, that are a buddy to these residents, are not the play area for the kids in there? I mean, what, how, how can I have a sense of, of comfort? That, that area is gonna be restricted. Like you close up the road, because if you open up a road, people are gonna use it. So what, what is the reassurance for that?
Well, when we were in site plan approval process for the planning commission, we addressed part of what you're talking about. It doesn't answer at all. Because we did it somewhat with the grading of the site, which you'll see eventually. And we did it with the addition of landscaping to act as a barrier. Now, that issue can be addressed in the working committees with the council, um, on the working committee, uh, before it comes to site plan approval, which is the last step. We can do that.
You know, with all we're talking about, I want the residents on Circle Drive to have a quality of life that's been corrected in any neighborhood. And I think Lawrence Tech should take responsibility in that. And it's not about age discrimination. But is there something that says if you own property, you have to offer it as housing? If you've been holding that property, I know that you've been renting to families and individuals. It's just recently that we've started hearing about these students in the last few years. And you've been, you own the property, but eventually you say you might want to expand or do whatever. But just, just allow the residents to have a quality of life. And that should be, that should be the expectation of Lawrence Tech.
Maybe we need to do more of that with respect to the housing that we own to prevent that mix from occurring in that community. And we can do that, and we'll do that.
I don't want you to talk for one minute. It's already admitted to the fact that they are not monitoring what they already have. They have a home that has teenagers in it, period. No adult in there at all. Is the white house two from mine? The dormitory will be built at the back of my house. No, I do not want that dormitory at the back of my house. I do not want the threat of my wife will be worried about when she comes home at night, there's some teenagers, some dope ass drunk or whatever in my backyard. So no, I do not want it there. And though they are not taking care of their responsibility, 'cause he doesn't even know the fact that there's teenagers in a house. Not adults, teenagers.
Thank you. Uh, I'm, uh, I have some questions. Listen to everybody else talk, I have some questions. I wanna skip ahead to the, the site plan. Just because I wanna know what part of that red area is going to be the footprint for the, for the dorm? And everybody can.
Okay. Uh, the housing is going to be in this area. And it's about the size of this, my finger there.
Okay.
That's about it.
Okay.
So this, this is all landscaping and convention pond and all landscaping associated with stormwater management.
So it's gonna be up in the northeast corner. It's gonna be a, uh, take a, ten percent of the, or less of the, of the area that's supposed to be rezoned.
I'm not sure of the percentage. You might be a little more than that, but it's not gonna be much more than that. You're about right.
Okay.
And if it all, the front and the entrance and the walks are all oriented toward the parking lot and through the center, the center of campus. If we have emergency exits all to the ends of the building, yes. But they're not, um, hardware for access into the building for most.
What, what I heard tonight sounds to me like there's a reluctance to have a dorm built because of rejecting what's happening now onto the dorm, which most likely is not gonna happen. And a recent night, I had a question that I have is, you already have some student dorms. Uh, what experience do you, are you aware of that you have with occurred student dorms?
Uh, let me start with housing across Ten Mile, the nine-story building. I know little to nothing about the experience in that building. Okay? What I do know is it's the largest population dorm we have. And, and the good news is that I know nothing. But which is, it says that there aren't incidents that are occurring that I'm aware of and would be aware of, I hear about. The housing north, that's the J-shaped building on the campus, that's. This one's right here.
Okay.
That building was designed for two hundred and thirty-two beds. We're also gonna build a hundred and fifty-one. And the actuality is, we don't have two hundred and thirty-two beds in every bunch, twenty-eight. And with two hundred and twenty-eight in there, and it's right on the campus, I'm familiar with it. I built that building. And we have had incidents in the first year heavily, uh, around Halloween the first year, until we, the first year, we opened it in August, and we had trouble in, in October. And since then, we've had nothing but the routine kinds of incidents that you have with individual student behavior. That first year, they set off smoke alarms. They, they set off things in the building, and all the shutters went down. And there was some breaking going on. They clamped down on that. I know of no significant issue other than individuals since that time.
Okay, um, one, um, question.
The dorm- Great school. The dormitory they used to talking about today just recently built is the one that they use to walk through the actual neighborhood. Because you can walk through there, there's an open line. And they just go right through there, walk up the street. And now they have the homes where they wanna go party at.
I'm sorry, we didn't expect this meeting to come to a halt until we had a week.
What I said was, the dormitory they just recently built, they have a volleyball court there. And that's the area which they can walk through to come in on the circle and then go over to where the homes are on the top half of the circle for the party. And they can walk back through the dorm. Or they'll walk all the way around. Either of the ways, stealing some of the traffic being on Circle Drive.
Right. Um, but it appears to me, we've got some real issues on behavior, obviously, 'cause we've got some real issues on enforcement. That was, I mean, that was, um, so long way to solving a lot of problems. And the, and the proximity of private homes, family homes, with homes or houses occupied by what's the teenagers or students, is drawing in other people from the outside and from the neighborhood that's making life difficult. So we've got some real class, culture clashes in a way.
Correct.
You know, it's-
Yes, the two other lanes that left out of here actually go to their homes that they walked past going into the party.
Um, I think there's a lot that we could do on, on, um, site plan issue, which is coming up after, not after, not immediately after this. But I think there are a lot of things we could do to minimize intrusions from the dormitory. The enforcement of the area that's there now, um, is something that we've really had to correct. As far as rezoning, they have to have, Lawrence Tech, in order to expand, has to have this dormitory built. So our challenge and their challenge is to try to work out something that will minimize or eliminate the bad behavior, make it physically impossible for people to get out of this neighborhood after hours. We know this, there's a lot of stuff going on here that has to be controlled. Um,
You, you know, I, I'm sitting here, and I'm, I'm beginning not to, no, more understand what it is that people want. I, I'm losing sight of what it is you want. If Lawrence Tech owns housing, ungoes free. Then what you have, you have a different neighborhood than when you move there. How much change college kids, you know, this type of control where somebody walks? I live in the dorm. If you built, I would you wanna live right now next door to a dorm or a university? I'm doomed for that. Well, with college, it was fine. We, the, the dynamics of the neighborhood, they are changing. It's not about the neighborhood. None of us up here wanna live behind the dorm. Now, if you all there wanna live behind the dorm, unless maybe you work at the university or if you were going by that house, you have other options. I doubt it. But I'm losing sight of what it is that you want. We're all of agreement. Lawrence Tech is going to expand. Lawrence Tech isn't ready to buy up all these houses. They wanna mix. We cannot control these young, I mean, they're not kids. These kids are eighteen, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. They're college kids. They're way too old. They're gonna walk. They're gonna get together. They're gonna have parties. They're gonna go get something to eat. They're gonna study together. They're gonna go to class early in the morning. I'm beginning to lose sight of what it is that Lawrence Tech wants. You want us to approve so you can go ahead and build this dorm, knowing that you're having a major impact on this residential family, home, neighborhood. And you're just saying, oh, well, uh, either you guys will stay and adjust, or you'll rent your house out and make some money, forgetting that maybe you can't rent it out and make some money. Maybe you need that money to go buy another house. I'm, I'm beginning to lose sight of, of what was satisfied, cities always satisfy this. If Lawrence Tech is gonna head and borrow all that land, take the people, it needs a, uh, piece of money for free. And then you decide if you wanna stay there or not. But I think that you're offering too little, not enough money for the folks to say, to have an option, whether or not they wanna stay there or they don't. Is the value of the land gonna go up? Doesn't matter if the value goes up. If you, if you try to stay in the house rather than by college students in a college area. At some point, Lawrence Tech is going to expand. You're gonna spend on this growing, great school. You're gonna expand over. Isn't it, you're not ready? You just go ahead and you try to purchase all of that land and offer the people something, and you're gonna, they're making decisions. Yay or nay, they're gonna stand or leave. If you stay there, you know what you're dealing with. If you gotta leave, you have something. But you gotta be realistic. You're not gonna get what you would've gotten five years ago. None of us will get that for our house. So if you're holding out for that, you're not gonna get it.
I'm not holding out for anything.
I don't understand what you want anymore.
I don't wanna move. I, I don't wanna move. I did not ask Lawrence Tech to move. I'm happy in my house. Fifty thousand dollars is not gonna buy me what I have now.
But that's not gonna happen here because Lawrence Tech-
So, so where's the house?
Lawrence Tech is going to expand. It's going to grow. That area is going to grow. It's what's best for the city in a number of different ways. So either you stay there and you recognize where you are, or they make your offer, you accept it, you go someplace else. But that offer has to be something that's reasonable.
And that, we haven't got, fifty thousand dollars is not gonna get me anywhere.
And I, and, and so beyond that, you were asking, you're asking us to make a decision tonight about some kind of something. But the reality is, you are moving, you are expanding. And then there's those types of residents. And then Lawrence Tech, these are the, for me to decide. This needs to say, you know, hey, what if we were these residents? What would we wanna do? If they were, you know, if they move, well, what, what, what would we wanna do? If any of us were living on that street, what would I want? Stop saying it's all right. If any of us were living on that street, would that be all right with having old houses, old lives on Tech? With college kids, which are great, let's have them in the city. But it's the college campus. It's changed. But I'm not sure. You keep going back and forth. And I ask, like, how it's gonna work?
You can't say it's a college campus.
Yeah, the college campus there. Lawrence Tech needs to expand. The dorm probably-
But there, those, those are people living in homes?
But there, but, but Lawrence Tech is growing.
Correct.
It, it, it's expanding. It needs more-
Well, they need to buy us out of those homes, or quit running us out of the homes. I mean, the only thing active you bring in the dorm is you're trying to run us out of homes or force-
They're trying to expand, and so what you're holding out for is that you would like to be able to offer a grid. And then let's just go ahead and buy it all that land. And then make it a five-year or ten-year, Lawrence Tech can use that button and say, this is fine, this is fine, buy a land from me. And I think we won't have this problem. Okay, I, I don't know how many times we can go over this and get, go to the-
I don't, I think, I think- Sorry, I've gotten this, get this before, is amend the future land use map from, what I, specifically claim that's there, from, just, uh-
It's been residential to medical education institution.
No, this A, we're on A, not B.
We're still on A.
We're on A. We're talking about the South Mill.
We, we are on A. It's from modern density, single family, to medical education institution. As for master plan amendment.
Just, just the A, master plan amendment. I'm, I'm going to suggest and recommend that we act on Public hearing A. Um, that we amend the future land use. I'm going to recommend, and this is going to be motion from the council, that we postpone action on Public hearing B until, uh, we'll have to pick a date and consider that with the site plan, because we're going to be here all night. How can we, they will resolve this. We've still got quite a bit of agenda to get through. Um-
Terry, uh, question you. By changing the master plan, we are not rezoning the property. What we are doing is changing the master plan.
That's correct. You would have to deal with the rezoning on a Sunday and a later.
So if we, if we put aside rezoning and the, and the mass, and the site plan, right?
Right, the site plan, I was, my recommendation was to postpone it.
Same night?
That's correct.
Keep it all on one night?
Yes, I would recommend that.
That where the people can see the site plan? Because, you know, even, you know, it's even interesting that when, uh, gentleman from L T U would put his finger up there at the top right-hand corner, you know, it, it is such a small little piece that it rests its own, I could lot landscaping and, and, uh, retention pond. So there's, so there's homes there that is not even going to be next to the, and most of the homes are not going to be next to the, the building. In fact, the, the whole length of that parcel is going to be, uh, almost, uh, by itself. According to what Joe said.
Through the chair, given, given the discussion, the length of the discussion tonight, my recommendation was going to be to postpone the site plan till September. I think part and parcel, Mr. Fercassi's indicated, the rezoning and the site plan could be dealt with on the same night. So that there's a complete picture. And, um, we still officially have to deal with that on the next item for us.
And I agree, because we're, we're not going to resolve these issues here tonight.
Um, Ed, Chair?
Mr. Fercassi.
I'm going to move the attached, uh, resolution admitting the future land use map.
Do you have support?
I'm not quite sure what, uh, you said yet.
Well, there's, there's three things. That's all we're doing is taking a map and, and painting a picture on that map of what the future is going to have. It is not, it's not going to rezone the parcel. It's going to be, it's going to be what everybody knows is going to happen, that you're going to be expansion to the west at some time. It could be twenty years from now. It doesn't go, it's, you know it's still going to happen.
Why would he divorce?
Because that's how you change the master plan.
But Sydney was saying that master plan is, because it's all, it was everything.
Well, Sydney, I'm sorry, it did, it occurred, he did vote on it. I think the city attorney can, can, I don't know if she's got the information from him or not. If I, Harry, yeah, just, just- Oh, yeah, but I want to correct one thing, and, and, and that is, will you give me the date? I think it was, uh, what was it, uh, April, April of two thousand nine? Uh, you approved it? Do you have the minutes there? On June fifth, two thousand six, council authorized preparation of companies' master, master page establish goals and guidelines to facilitate the direction, redevelopment and growth of the city of Southfield in the future. Planning, partnering contractor with professional consultant, mayor, city council, planning commission, and input from the cross-section of city administrative officials, city board, commission members, and the resident public has caused the extensive evaluation of information comprehensive of residential business and, and physical interests throughout the city. Uh, on December seventeenth, two thousand eight, pursuant to the requirements of section five point five nine, comprehensive master plan procedure, article four, chapter forty-five, title five of the code for the city of Southfield, the Southfield Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the proposed comprehensive master plan and forward a favorable recommendation to city council. So be it resolved that the comprehensive master plan for the city of Southfield is hereby adopted in that preparation of the final comprehensive master plan document is hereby directed. At the minute, that's the residential requirement. Requirement for the city code, city council, so no matter that it's five years from the state, we do the master plan meeting. It's submitted. That's it. What it says, it was adopted and then it's-
By planning commission.
It was virtual.
It was proposed by the council.
Well, ma, ma, the president. First of all, personally, I was on medical leave in April of two thousand nine, so I can't attest to whether it was passed or not. I wasn't here. I think there are minutes in the city clerk's office. Well, then we have to, which we-
Not that you're going to give us five hours.
We have to check the minutes? If, if, you are actually contesting whether the master plan was ever approved. Obviously, if it wasn't approved, doesn't have to be a minute. Yes, for four days tonight is amendment of the plan. We can check the minutes. It was either adopted on April of two thousand nine or it wasn't. So what I would do, here then, if you, here-
No, it's not on the computer here. We would have to do some research to get that required.
April two thousand nine, that's how I would think. I might create one now and then, the obsolete master plan.
You want it done now?
Well, I just, council's decision. I can't attest to whether the master plan was passed. I was told it was passed. Mr. Crowe, did you see the actual resolution adopted yet?
We have to verify that.
All right, so I can't verify, only the minutes can. Council either has to ask if those minutes, you looked at now or move forward.
All right, Terry.
Through the chair, I just asked for, for this item and the other two to be postponed.
That's me, post on all of them, everything. We need, we need to get the cards, data.
If, if, if you're going to, that's right. If you're going to postpone September twenty-six, you might, okay, so all three of them.
A motion to postpone the city attorney to what day? September twenty-sixth?
I believe that's what Mr. Crowe is suggesting.
Is that, I think, September twenty-sixth?
September twenty-sixth. It's the next regular meeting of council. September twenty-sixth.
Right, to make, to make the motion to postpone September twenty-sixth, Mr. Land, do you have support?
All right.
Before, I need support, under my orders. Motion by Mr. Land, support on this to postpone the amendment to the future of land use on plan rezoning and the thing that-
Well, we need three separate motions, the three separate agenda items, yes. And, and then I'm going to suggest very strongly that you ask Mr. Crowe to bring this letter to you to one of your two committees of the whole meeting. September twelve, preferably, so that we can have this kind of discussion in a more informed sense.
No, I, you know what, I was in that whole flip up thing, because I was concerned that this wasn't on that. Well, I was concerned that it wasn't on that September twenty-sixth, and I would like to see what he said. I'm done.
All right, we have a motion, um, amendment to the nature of land use plan. We have to take it sometime, council. We have, um, I have public hearing B. Motion by Mr. Land, support by Mr. Taylor, to bring this back, um, September twenty-sixth. All in favor? Opposed? All right, now we have a motion, we need a motion on, uh, rezoning on public, uh, hearing B. Motion by Mr. Land, support by Mr. Taylor, to postpone, uh, the thirteen-term public hearing B until September twenty-sixth. All in favor?
All right.
Action, Terry. And the site plan, do we need a motion to postpone, do we need a motion to postpone the site plan?
I, I made a, my letter in the back of your request.
Do we need a motion? Make a motion by Mr. Land, support, support by Mr. Taylor, to, um, postpone the, the site plan until September twenty-sixth. Right, the meeting. All in favor?
All right.
Opposed, commercial, Terry. And this will come back at a, any, um, uh-
Figure it's a, this is September twelve, so that you'll have a couple of weeks in the interim.
And, and, uh, we'll start with that.
On the twenty-sixth, on the twelfth?